Good morning. We'll call the Board of Commissioners meeting to order for Tuesday. I'd ask everybody to please stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
... To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of the dark, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, let's know for the record that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is on the north wall of the legislative chambers. An automatic defibrillator is in the back of the room if anybody needs it for health reasons. Also, if you have any cell phones, mobile devices, please silence them or mute them. With that, let's note for the record, we do not have the option of electronic voting today, so everybody's on equal ground and we'll revert back to the days of roll calls. So the clerk will be calling the roll today. With that, we will call to order the Board of Equalization meeting, roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson is absent. Commissioner Boyle?
Here.
Mr. Kavanaugh is absent. Mr. Duda?
Here.
Mr. Kraft?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item C is citizens' comments. Is there anybody that wants to comment on the Board of Equalization-related item not listed on the agenda?
That would be me. Good mornings.
Yes, sir. Note, you have five minutes.
Yes. Paul Bellinger, 10215 West Center Road. I ask that my petition here be received before the Board of Equalization this morning. I have copies also, Dan, for the other members. I would just ask that swift and certain action be taken, shall take place, for determination on those. It's related to the property that I was awarded here through the district court and the property is shaking, our home shake out there on West Center Road in the residential area. So we would hope that, you know, something would happen out there with the 32,000 people that drive by every day. It's a number-one intersection, residential intersection, that has commercial traffic coming through it. I went over to MAPPA the other day and got my 2018 survey and that was increased to 32,750 through our residential neighborhood, mind you. A 125,000-pound vehicle can transfer through our, or transit through our R2 neighborhood at 40 mile an hour. And that's, it's crazy. Our houses are shaking. There's nothing, you know, I'm not here for me, I'm here for my neighbors because we're all in the same boat, you know? We all shake. 95th Circle through 108, that's a residential area there, it's a half-mile. My address is West Center Road. I've been there for 25 years and, you know, when they let the truck route run through there, that's when our problems really started. It's unhealthy to live there. You know, when you have 32,000 people come through your neighborhood every day, it's not a healthy place to live. You know, when the 18-wheeler shakes your house at 3:00 in the morning, it's not a healthy place to live. It's not a place where you want your children growing up, you know? If it's 4:00, 5:00 in the morning, our property values don't go up if there's five or six hours of stopped traffic in front of our house. Commissioner Morgan, I think you'd agree with that, wouldn't you? If you yield for a question for me, please.
No, I'm at the rule that we can't do that.
Okay, fine.
I will ask later, when you stand.
That's all I have, Commissioner Rogers. Thank you. I'm here for any questions, just in case.
This is under citizens' comments. This is not an action item, so only thing we can do is listen to them unless there's a point in fact. So if you're done, you're done.
Thank you, Chris.
We're not allowed to talk to citizens when they come before.
The commissioners are.
I know that. Thank you, Commissioner.
Look, everybody, don't play this game. You know the rule. Is there anybody else that would like to comment on citizens' comments?
Yeah, I would, but we're not allowed to comment on citizens' comments.
We'll move on to item D, resolutions. We will take items D, F, and G together. What's the will of the board?
Give approval.
There's a motion by Commissioner Duda, a second by Commissioner Boyle.
Is number two on this?
Yes.
I need to abstain.
Okay, please do. With that, Mr. Clerk, we're going to pull G, so Commissioner, we're going to just do item F and D, so Commissioner Kraft can abstain on G. So make note, D, just D and F.
Just D and F?
Yes.
Okay.
That's motion by Commissioner Duda and a second by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote. I mean, roll call. My habit.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Item G is approval, approving applications for tactical exemptions on motor vehicles recommended for approval by the Treasurers. There are motion, motion by Commissioner Duda, is that second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Morgan.
And I'm going to abstain because I'm on the board of the address.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Item G is approval, approving applications for tactical exemptions on motor vehicles recommended for approval by the Treasurers. There are motion, motion by Commissioner Duda, is that second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Morgan.
And I'm going to abstain because I'm on the board of the address.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft abstains. Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes with by-voting yes, one abstaining.
Item E and H are related. We're going to take them together. Item E is a certified assessment correction reflecting a correction in the value and approval. Item H is a protest of value added to Form Exempt Parcel, number 1920110400. Mr. Go with it.
Good morning. Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor/Register of Deeds Office. Before we start, since there's no electronic voting, Commissioner Boyle, does this mean your vote's going to count at long last?
(laughing).
All right. E and H relate to the same properties and it's a little bit convoluted for a number of reasons. So let me try and explain what it's all about. This initially was, or it was one parcel and it contained an assisted living property owned by the Douglas County Housing Authority and some excess land. And it sold in August of 2019 for $5.5 million. And so because it was going from exempt to non-exempt, we did a certified assessment correction soon after, adding value for, and what, for what proved to be two parcels. Because what happened almost immediately is the property owners split what they bought into two parcels. One parcel containing about eight acres of land, the other parcel containing the assisted living in the facility and the land underneath. So we initially did a certified assessment correction that set the value for both of the parcels. Subsequently, the property owner filed a protest, that's item E, and they filed a protest and they provided an appraisal and some other information for us. Upon receiving the protest and the appraisal, it provided some information to us that we did not have when we initially set the value. So we redid the value on the property and decided to revise it downward through another CAC to replace the one we had already done. That's item G, okay? So what you have here, and let me walk you through kind of where we're at.
Item H, you mean?
H is the, I'm sorry, H is the protest, E is the CAC. I'm sorry, I must have switched those around in my head, I'm sorry. But in any event, for the CAC that we're advocating, we're advocating that the land piece be set at $53,100 down from what it was before, largely because even though it's in the city limits of the City of Valley, they are still farming it, so there still is a valuation preference that goes along, even if they're not in special valuation. And then with respect to the assisted living piece, we did a cost approach on that and got down to $4.4,922,200. The reason we did a cost approach, well, let's do the land piece first, that's the easiest one. In the protest, the property owner doesn't advocate for a specific dollar amount, they just want some sort of ag treatment. And we're doing that in our certified assessment correction, 19252R. So I don't think we're in disagreement there. With respect to the assisted living piece, though, that's where we are in disagreement. We did a cost approach on ours to get to our $4.9 million in value. And the reason we did it is, at least what our appraiser that does this kind of property tells me, is that with things like assisted livings and nursing homes, there's always personal, elements of personal property that go along with the purchase. There's always some business value, some intangible value, and it's kind of hard to isolate those things and just get to the real estate. And the cost approach is our best tool to do that. So we did a cost approach and came up with about $4.9 million. The property owner advocates $4 million value for all of it. In our estimation, they're probably overvaluing the goodwill and personal property because, for example, on the Form 521, we always ask, the form asks people, was there personal property that was part of the sale? And what was the market value of the property? And the property owners indicated that the market value of the property was 5.5 million and that there was no personal property part of the sale. Now, sometimes people screw that form up. I get that. On the other hand, Orchard Gardens here is part of the Dial Group that owns assisted living and nursing homes across five different states and they manage about 2,000 units. They aren't babes in the woods about this. So in any event, the difference is, I suppose, there really isn't much difference on the land value for that vacant parcel. We would advocate adopting CAC 19252R, that's part of Agenda Item E. And then for the nursing home piece, the difference really is between what the property owner's asking for, which is about 3.9 million and something, and ours, which is about 4.9. I know that when these protests come in, they are referred to a referee, and I think that was the case here, and I think Catherine Hall would have the referee recommendation on this. One last note about the process, I think the choices are simple. I guess you could adopt the CACs or you could grant the protest, and then you would dismiss the one you didn't choose.
Okay. You got anything you need to add?
Sure, I'm just going to confirm that the referee did make a recommendation, reviewed the protest and recommended going with the assessor's corrected value here suggested in item E.
We'll have a motion in a second, and if anybody's here that wants to speak, they can. Is there a motion to accept the assessor's recommendations for E and H? There's a motion by Commissioner Boyle, a second by Commissioner Duda. Anybody here in the public commenting on that?
Question.
Yes.
The figure is 4.9 million?
Million or 4.922 million? Oh, I'm sorry, I was just, I was just ballparking it because I was too lazy to say 4.922.
Okay.
But yes, for that parcel, the figure you would be adopting is, if I can get my hands on it, you would be adopting the numbers that are in the CAC, they're in item E. So for the land parcel, it would be $53,100. And for the parcel with the improvement on it, it would be $4,922,200.
Very good.
I have that, Dan Ash County Clerk. And Theresa, I may just have to talk with Jennifer Crystal Clark, but I assume we need to send out notices for both items, even though we're going with the same value. But I guess I'm curious as to this property owner, if they're protesting item E, it comes back to the board. If they're upset with the protest decision, then they go to Turk? Even though it's the same, I assume you follow what I'm saying?
Yes, I do. Theresa, you're at County Attorney's Office. I think that's correct, Dan. So once they've appealed to the board, which is item H, I believe, is the appeal to the board, then the next step is Turk. So I think you are accurate. I think you do need to give a response on both. Turk is, I don't think that H would be heard immediately, and so if they also then appealed E up to Turk, I think we could make a motion to consolidate those items.
But if they're protesting item E, it would come back, because this is not a protest.
Yes.
So they would come back to the board for item E?
Yes, so, yes, that is correct. So your first step is always to come back to the board in that process, and so you're correct.
All right, thanks for the...
Attempted, Claire.
Well, I know, obviously, we can't really give this individual advice, but as confusing as it may be, I just want to make sure they know, here's what you want to do for E and here's what you could do for H, I guess, so, all right.
With that, just let me know for the record, the motion in a second, or that includes adjournment? Yes.
If I may, has, does the motion include dismissing the protest? It's an H.
(inaudible).
Okay, well, what that means is adopting what we've suggested in E, but it also means you have to dispose of the protest in H, I think.
Well, let's...
What do you think?
Well, I guess that's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, so I think you do need to do something on each item. You need to give the applicant or petitioner a response on each item.
With the motion in a second, or release the, the motion in a second, we can do them separately.
Well, I wonder if we could?
No, nobody came up. So we're going to release the motions as they exist. Right now, we're going to move to accept the motion.
May I make a suggestion? Could we take up the protest on item H first and then approve item E? Do you think that makes sense, Mike? Either way.
Okay. Is there a motion to deny the protest on item H? Motion by Commissioner Kraft, a second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote, I mean, roll call.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Item E, is there a motion to accept the recommendation of the assessor and adjournment? Yes. Motion by Commissioner Duda, a second by Commissioner Morgan. Roll call.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
We'll now call to item, the Board of Corrections Meeting. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson is absent. Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Here.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Here. Item 1 is approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections Meeting held Tuesday, October 8, 2019. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Duda, is that second? A second by Commissioner Boyle. Roll call.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Item 2 is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Corrections-related items not listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments? Seeing none, we'll move to item 3, which is the report from the Director, Director Myers.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Mike Myers, the Director of Corrections for Douglas County. You have before you my report for the month of October of 2019. Following the fourth month of the fiscal year, we are under budget by $241,174. While that is good news, we do anticipate that the recent resolution of union contracts will probably wipe out that surplus. Though we've made some recent progress towards achieving our staffing goals, overtime was up slightly in October with 1,000, or excuse me, 11,548 hours worked. That is up from 10,928 in September. In large part, that's explained by, we finally had enough staff to commence some annual training that is required for us to do by the end of the year. There were $441,230 spent on overtime during the month of October. That is up approximately $11,000 from the previous month. Enclosure number 2, Community Corrections and Programs. 29 individuals served a combined 161 days in the sanction center, and 50 individuals combined, served a combined 252 days in the Transitional Discharge Center. Those are combined, that is the highest number we've had since we began that process of diverting certain folks from the jail to the Community Correction Center. We held our third GED graduation ceremony. I would like to congratulate all of the graduates and the staff who supported this achievement. In particular, I want to acknowledge our GED instructor, Heather Robinson, who's been running both programs, GED both in the jail as well as Community Corrections, for several months. We anticipate more success as we return to our allocated level of resources for GED in the near future. We were also fortunate to have two of our staff selected to attend a training on the Public Safety Assessment, which is a new pretrial release risk assessment tool. We plan to begin a pilot of this new instrument in the near future. 24/7 sobriety had 72 admissions. There were 3,944 breath tests completed. 18 were positive for alcohol use, and there were also 18 no-shows. The overall compliance rate for breath testing was 99.1%. 49 individuals were monitored for 1,158 days of SCRAM monitoring. There were zero no-shows, zero tampering violations, and there were three alcohol violations. The SCRAM compliance rate was 99.8%. There were 752 saliva drug tests administered with 18 positive tests and 40 no-shows. 20 drug testing patches were submitted for testing with four violations. Work release admitted 39 individuals during October, and they contributed a combined 126 hours of community service. House arrest admitted 69 individuals. 41 individuals were admitted to RAP and where one individual achieved their GED. 69 individuals were admitted to programs in the jail, and again, another individual achieved their GED in the jail. Pretrial services, 18 individuals were referred for priority prosecution. 202 bed days were saved. 341 individuals were placed on pretrial release. 1,142 were managed on pretrial release with a 90% compliance rate. 273 individuals visited the law library. Our annual ICE audit and security audit were both conducted during October. Both audit teams provided valuable feedback regarding our day-to-day operations and suggestions for improving both our physical plant as well as our procedures. Enclosure number 4, personnel. Officers Rebecca Owens and Nicholas Wagner were both promoted to the rank of sergeant in October. 22 officers, or excuse me, 20 new officers graduated on October 4th and 19 completed the two weeks of field training and are working in the housing units. 22 officers began training on October 21st. They actually did just graduate this past Friday, and they will be working in the housing units upon the completion of field training by December 1st. This class has followed the newly adopted model, which accelerates training by utilizing overtime during the, during training. And we are able to complete training and field training in six weeks rather than the eight weeks we traditionally have spent. We anticipate a class of more than 15 officers to begin training on December 2nd. The hiring committee is working on building the next class, which will begin sometime in January. Seven officers, all below the rank of sergeant, left employment during October. Unfortunately, we are anticipating the loss of several officers to law enforcement agencies as academies for Omaha Police Department and other law enforcement agencies are beginning soon. I did want to point out, however, that we have not lost an officer to another correctional facility in recent memory, perhaps during, you know, my entire tenure as jail director. We also believe that the recently adopted and approved contract contains several provisions which will continue to aid in attracting new officers and improve retention. We had a net gain throughout the officer ranks of 16 during October, concluding the month at 360 out of our 394 which are authorized. Enclosure number 5, our population. We had 1,689 admissions, 1,755 releases. Our high count was 1,323. Our low count was 1,247. Our average daily population was 1,281. Thankfully, that is a slight decrease from the previous month. We had 411 custodial sanctioned bed days. The US Marshal population increased. The ICE population decreased. The felony pretrial population decreased. The misdemeanor pretrial population decreased. Probation violations also decreased, and the female population decreased slightly. There were four female housing units open throughout the month. I've added, based upon previous discussions at Board of Corrections meetings, some demographic breakdown according to race to the report. 34% of our population were African-American males, 31% were Caucasian males, 13% were Hispanic males, 3% Native American males, and 1% Asian. 8% of our population were Caucasian female, 6% were African-American female, 1% were Hispanic females, 1% were Native American females, and 0% were Asian females. We'll try to build upon this over the course of time and give you some trend lines now that we're actually tracking this data. And we will be, I also wanted to point out that this is only considering the main jail. The Community Corrections population is not included in this number, which may shift some of those numbers slightly. Turning your attention to enclosure number 6, medical. There are 1,388 intake screenings. There were 437 health and physical assessments. Inmates were sent out to the hospital 19 times for emergent medical care. 10 of those were by 911. There were nine hospital admissions, which resulted in 64 days of hospitalization. I'll point out that we had one individual, as medical data lags a month, so one individual in September was hospitalized virtually for the entire month. So that skewed that hospitalization day number up quite a bit from the norm. Enclosure number 7, mental health. There were 154 initial psychiatric assessments. There were 134 initial mental health assessments. There were 46 mental health infirmary placements. There were eight Board of Mental Health referrals and four placements in long-term psychiatric facilities. Other noteworthy items. Development of a strategic plan for the Department of Corrections got underway during the course of October and will continue throughout the next few months. Once complete, we will have a comprehensive plan which will set priorities for security, programming, compliance, budgeting, and staff wellness and engagement. We will share this plan with all... We will share this plan with all of our staff, with the county board, and any other interested party to hold ourselves accountable to our responsibilities contained within the plan and to facilitate a better understanding of the values and the focus of the Department of Corrections. I wish to want- the public want to acknowledge Marcos San Martin and Diane Carlson, who guided Amber Redmond, Debbie Otwell, and myself, all pretty much rookies in the contract negotiation process through that process. I also want to thank the negotiation team of the FOP Lodge Eight for working through many complex issues with, for the most part, always a spirit of respect, cooperation, and And finally, I want to point out that we've been awarded approximately four million dollars in grants this fall, which will be used to implement the widespread use of body warden cameras, to establish a treatment program in the jail for individuals afflicted with co-occurring mental health and substance abuse disorders, and to continue to operate and expand our reentry services program.
No, I will. No, I will. No, I will. I will. I saw him when he's about to end. When you finish, we'll do it.
All right. Each of these grants will run a course of three to four years and cover the costs of all of those initiatives that I just mentioned.
Before we get to the questions, I see some classmates come. You want to tell us what school you're from? Great.
They're from Mary Arquise, and they're a part of the Omaha Law League Fourth Grade jurors during the civic center and the courthouse, just to learn about our local government.
Okay. Welcome you all. You walked into the Board of Corrections meeting where the director is giving a presentation. Thank you all for coming. Commissioner Boyle.
I just like to ask the children, do any of you know Emmy Boyle?
Everyone. Thank you all.
She isn't there, is she? I haven't got my glasses on. There we go. Good to see you all.
Thank you. Mike, you got two questions. Commissioner Kavanaugh or Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Yeah, each side. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thanks for this. I note that we have an average daily population of twelve eighty-one with a high of thirteen twenty-three, and that's bumping up pretty much to full house, or it is there?
That high number especially, yes.
Okay. And then, the personnel situation remains to be concerned. We have three hundred and sixty folks of an authorized three hundred and ninety-four, and you indicate in there, you know, some people coming on, but we're still significantly under authorized level, compelling us to go to this overtime number of about a half million dollars a month, right?
Correct.
Do you see an end game on that?
With the changes we've made from beginning with the application process through the interview process, accelerating that, getting more people involved with that, combined with the accelerated training program, that has helped us bring on more officers more quickly than we have before. The other flip side of that coin is doing a better job of keeping the people who we already have. We have seen some progress on that front, too, not as much as I would have liked, but we- our retention rate, especially among those newer officers where we've been focusing, has improved compared to a year ago. We are- I- like I said, as I pointed out in my report, we rarely, if ever, lose an officer to another correctional agency. We do occasionally lose officers to- whose career goal is to be in law enforcement. And because of the academies beginning, I think we've lost several or are losing several, that'll be included in my November report. That is probably something we will always continue to deal with for people who want to be on that career path.
Right. So we add seven- we add twenty and we lose seven, basically, and that's the month. You know, I'm just interested in this because you mentioned you're going into strategic planning, which is great, and hopefully, part of that will be, okay, how do we get out of this hole that we're in and get to a hundred percent or close to a hundred percent of authorized staffing? Thanks for that, and I like the way that this new format is laid out. It's much more accessible relative to the personnel and population, then, again, we're overcrowded and understaffed, again.
Though both have gotten slightly better, that does remain the case.
The demographic breakout, again, kudos on that, shows that, at least among the male population, it's about sixty-nine percent minority, with the largest cohort being thirty-four percent African-American males. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. One thing going forward, because I've struggled with math all my life, is if we could break out the male and female populations to give us a, you know, kind of an overall view of those two, but it appears that overwhelmingly, we have a minority-majority correctional center.
That is true.
That is new information that you're putting in here, and I think that's going to be valuable to us going forward. Finally, on the medical information in number six, we have thirteen eighty-eight, thirteen hundred and eighty-eight initial screenings, but I'm looking at the admissions information in number five, and we have sixteen hundred and eighty-nine admissions. Is- what's the difference there?
Sure. For one, I want to point out, the medical data lags a month. It takes- so that's September data, and the admissions data is October data. The other- there were all, even if we corrected, figured out a way to get that information faster and included the most recent data in this report, they would still never match up, because there are people who bond out within a few hours or with, you know, maybe less than an hour. Those people don't- are in and out before they get an intake.
I see. Right. And finally, you're in the final phase of the Public Safety Bond construction update. How's that going?
That is going well. We're still shooting to have all of the housing units completed by end of June, we hope, and then there will be wrapping up the gymnasium that's been functioning as a housing unit will be renovated over the course of the summer, so the project in total will be complete by September.
Well, kudos to you, and I see Mr. Laye back there to public property as well, on time and on budget. Is that right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes. Wednesday at noon, you're having an event. Explain that to us.
Yes, there is another- and I'm sorry, I should have put included that in my report. There is a- another program put on by inmates who are in one of our therapeutic communities. You are all welcome to attend. It is at noon on Wednesday. If you want to meet in the lobby about eleven forty-five, we can make sure that you're up in place on time for that. This is- Commissioner Kraft attended our most recent one. They are very moving. There really shows the culture shift that we've been pushing for in the- in specific housing units to create more of a rehabilitative culture rather than just a pass-your-time, learn how to be a better criminal culture, really trying to turn that on its ear and have people adopt a position of where they're going to help and support each other to change their lives.
And it is well worth my fellow commissioners' time to attend, should they be free at that time. Currently, and I don't have my report in front of me, and I didn't bring my computer today. You said we had two hundred and sixty officers on duty, is that correct?
Three hundred and sixty.
Three hundred and sixty, out of three hundred and ninety?
Three hundred and ninety-four is our new authorized strength.
And you're adding twenty-two?
That includes the twenty-two.
That includes, okay.
We'll be adding an additional fifteen to seventeen. That'll start on December 2nd. There has already been a great deal of interviews completed for a January class, so I'd anticipate that one to be quite sizable. Hopefully, when we get to that point, we are getting very close.
So we are closing the gap.
We have been closing.
And we're doing it very well, and I appreciate that. And I don't see the need to repeat ourselves each and every month on the same issues, because it does get redundant for us and for you and for the public. You're doing a great job. Thank you.
Commissioner Duda.
Thank you. I had the opportunity to come down to the Veterans Unit to celebrate Veterans Day, and that is so moving. But while I was there, Justine Wall took me next door to a recovery unit and all these guys that are active in Narcotics Anonymous and everything, but it was so positive, though everything in there was positive. They gave me a piece of art that they- they don't have markers. They're not allowed to have markers. This art is made out of Skittles and Kool-Aid, and it is gorgeous. I've shown it- I'll bring it down and show it to people. It's unbelievable, but it is so positive. I mean, all these guys that are really kind of at the depths of things, and they're working their way up together, and I just- I have to commend you for just what a great atmosphere, at least in some parts of the jail. Where the people want it, they can get a positive reinforcing atmosphere there, and I just have to commend you and your staff for that. It was quite an experience.
Thank you, Commissioner, and all credit needs to go to Justine, Cindy Boganski, and all of Cindy's staff. They're the ones doing the work to make that change. We are trying to replicate what we first kind of captured in the Veterans Unit and replicate that in other areas of the jail, so we'll continue to make that push.
Very good. Nice job. Commissioner Morgan.
Mike, I again want to thank you, Amber, your staff and team, and just the way you manage that facility, the respect your people show to all people that unfortunately have to be housed there, and really, this board, I know I can speak for all the commissioners, we're really appreciative of having you and your team there and share that with the others. And I mean, it goes down to every single person at your facility under challenging, difficult circumstances, as all of us know. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mike, one question. You- I mean, this is the judge's call, so if you all have some discussion on, under the page two on the Community Corrections top fold, I mean, I've always been understood that you continue to have a ninety-nine point one, ninety-eight point eight success rates.
On twenty-four-seven, yeah.
That you're not taking enough risk. So with the situation going on, what- whether we- how do you qualify more people, because ninety-nine percent is?
Yeah, the people who are on alcohol monitoring, and that's consistent with twenty-four-seven programs across the country, their compliance rates on the alcohol portion of it are consistently high. You'll note- you can note that our- I haven't broken it out by percentages, the additional risk that we have taken on, I think we're about a year and a half into the drug testing now, if memory serves, those compliance rates are lower because those folks do carry more risk. They're- they're, you know, they're addicted to more powerful substances, as well as there may be just less conformity in their lifestyle. You can see they have a greater number of no-shows and a lower compliance rate. We have, before we added the drug testing, are- we typically ranged between ninety and about a hundred and ten people on twenty-four-seven, and now we're approximately about three hundred people on twenty-four-seven. So it is, we have expanded that pool. I- as far-
So it's the nature of the substance?
It's the nature of the substance, and I also think when you're looking at the folks who are on the program for alcohol, to increase the risk would mean that we'd be taking people who are maybe on their umpteenth DUI, which is probably not a- an advisable position for us to take in terms of both liability or safety to the public.
Commissioner Boyle.
Mike, first of all, it's an excellent report, as usual, really good, and I am real happy to see that you're doing a strategic plan for the DCY- DC, DC, and I think it's really important, and you're really on a terrific track to begin with. I'm always happy to hear about the things that are happening there, and I'll tell you why, because you're focusing on second chances. I mean, that- if there was a second name for the Douglas County Correction Facility, it should be the Second Chance Hotel. You know what I mean? It really is a great philosophy, because I know the things that you're doing, just what you just said about trying to instill the kind of attitude that you have in the Veterans Unit throughout the facility, that's a terrific goal, and I see the way that you act and the way you treat people and the way your staff is coming around, too. I really like that a lot. And, you know, I want to say something about Joe and I were working on that cost of criminal justice thing for quite a while, and one of the things that I discovered, I guess it's correct, I didn't go back and ask somebody about it, but we did it decade to decade, and a decade ago, the staffing supposedly of the Douglas County facility was four hundred people, and today it was four hundred and one, with the day that we took the snaps off. And it was pretty interesting, because over a decade, the staff has remained stable, largely because of the changes that were taken in direct supervision and so forth. But anyway, the bottom line is, I really appreciate what you're doing. You're really, you know, state law tells us, the judges follow state law about what the offenses, what kind of a sentence an offense brings and their latitude in giving that out at the inclusion of a trial and so forth. But the interesting thing is that what you are doing is taking that sentence and then trying to totally apply an attitude toward how we make things better, and it's a totally different philosophy. And one of these days, we need to put together some kind of a criminal justice review. We're not going to necessarily make any great headway, I suppose, to begin with, but we need to look at some of the offenses, and that leads to people being charged with being soft on crime, I guess, if you don't do some things, but we need to look at that to be sure that we're not putting people in behind bars that don't belong there, and I know that's what your philosophy leads to, so I appreciate it very much what you and Amber are doing. You've done a terrific job.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Senator.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Motion by Commissioner Kraft, second by Commissioner Duda. Roll call.
Commissioner Boyle? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft? Commissioner Morgan? Mr. Chair.
Here. I'm sorry. I'm used to the move. We'll go to the Board of Commissioners meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson is absent. Commissioner Boyle?
Present.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Present.
Commissioner Kraft?
Present.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item one is Minnesota Claims Letter A is approved of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, November 5th, 2019. Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment and process through Tuesday, November 19th, 2019. What's the will of the Board? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan. Roll call.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Item two is consent agenda. There's twelve items on that. Item G has been asked to be removed, to be laid over to future time. What's the will of the Board on consent agenda?
The approval of the consent agenda and the last item.
Motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Kraft, then Kavanaugh.
Item E, the resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the Nebraska Medical Center related to compliance requirements as a covered entity for the federal 340B drug purchasing program. As I recall, and Catherine? Diane?
I can answer, yes.
I forget something. Diane, we've done this before, have we not?
Yes, Diane Carlson, Deputy County Administrator. We have similar agreements with other medical providers in Douglas County. They request that we enter into this type of agreement because it's a requirement of their participation in the 340B program, which is a federal program.
And we've done this with also the-
Bergen Mercy.
Bergen Mercy and with One World and with, yeah, Charles Drew. That's the name I was trying to draw. So it's not in common. I just wanted to make- I just wanted to make sure this was what I thought it was. Thank you. Oh, and regarding item G, that was bold. I read the agreement, and Eric, I like it. Item G, even though we're not voting on it today, I thought it was well-written.
I'm gonna cut that off since we're screaming across the room, but...
I'm done.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Following up on that, county attorney could address this. So the memorandum of understanding underlying this Nebraska Medical Center related compliance requirements indicates in its recitals that the Nebraska Medical Center commits to provide health care services to low-income individuals who are not entitled to Medicare or Medicaid benefits at no reimbursement or considerably less than full reimbursement from these patients, consistent with its charity care policies. And goes on to say that county agrees to accept such commitment on behalf of the citizens of Douglas County and enter into this agreement to create enforceable expectations for the Nebraska Medical Center for the provision of health care services, including the provision of direct medical care. I guess my question is, does this operate, then, as a contract between us and the Nebraska Medical Service to provide these levels of care without cost to needy citizens of Douglas County?
Teresa York, County Attorney's Office. And I'm going to piggyback on what Diane Carlson said, and I may defer to her after I give my answer for more information. This agreement is necessary for that medical facility to participate in a federal program. They need a commitment from a governmental entity for them to be a participant. We do have this, as Commissioner Craft noted. We have it with several other health care facilities in Douglas County. And so if you note in the agreement before you, this MOU, Douglas County in paragraph three accepts their commitment and their representations, and we acknowledge that they're telling us that they are going to do these things. But it is not a contract exactly. It is more of a requirement for them to participate in this federal program.
Okay. So when it says this agreement that we're entering into creates an enforceable expectation, what exactly does that mean? I mean, can someone get judicial relief to enforce this agreement? How does that language work?
If I may, I'll start, and then I can see Diane's poised to also answer. So there's a few things in the agreement that if the board wanted to, there are some ability to do an audit. There's also an annual certification to the board that they're complying. And so there are some things the board can do to check on this MOU. And then I'll defer to Diane in case she has any additional information.
I don't really have more information unless you have questions. They do, on an annual basis, they are to provide an attestation to the county that, you know, details the type of services they provided on a charitable basis. And then I suppose if the board didn't receive that or wasn't satisfied with that, there could be follow-up with them for more information. And eventual, I suppose, if they didn't comply with that, then the board could terminate the agreement with 120 days' notice.
Let me see. Well, I mean, obviously, we have a lot of people under our care at the Douglas County Health Center and Mental Health Facility, not to mention our correctional facilities. And, you know, my question is, and I see that general assistance is on the agenda for later, is do we, as a policy, avail ourselves of this for people who are under our care but are not eligible for Medicare or Medicaid or any other compensation? I mean, it's a good thing if it works that way. I'm just wondering, is that what we do?
It's my understanding, and general assistance could maybe answer this better, but it's my understanding we do have an agreement, general assistance does, with Nebraska Medicine as well, or they used to, as one of their providers. If that's, you know, I'm not sure if that is answering the question.
Well, I mean, it's just a point that I'm very interested in, because it appears that we would have services available at no or limited cost for people who wouldn't have the ability to pay for them otherwise. But we can follow up with that at a different time. I have a couple other questions on other items, if we want to go to that.
You can. Your time's still long.
The Resolution M on the professional services agreement with Heartland Workforce Solutions, which is a general assistance contract.
Good morning.
Good morning. This contract with Heartland Workforce Solutions that we have on our agenda today is for $15,000 this year, and it looks like going forward for another amount. It appears to be related to getting people back in the workforce. Could you tell us a little bit about that?
Yes. We've been contracting with them the last few years. And it's been on the calendar year that we've been contracting with them. And it's been about $30,000 a year. And the reason it's different this year is we're just getting them on the fiscal year. So that's why it's $15,000 and then $30,000, just to get them on the fiscal year. But we work with Heartland Family, or Heartland Workforce Solutions, and we contract with them where we can have our clients go over there. And we hopefully can get them back into the community and get them working, get them the skills that they need. They can go ahead and go there and use their computers, use their job training services. Commissioner Rogers is actually who got us in contact with them and got that relationship started with us.
That's Commissioner's time.
Yep. You have to go to another five. So are you guys? You're going?
Okay. In the course of this contract over the last three years, have we been able to determine what, if any, success it's had, you know, kind of establishing a performance metric for what we are trying to do here?
We get a report from them every year. That's their statistics, community-wide, that they have. It's not specific to general assistance. But we do continue to refer people that are on our program to their services. But community-wide, they've been able to show us. And the demographics that we work with and the demographics they work with are, they do link.
And could you tell us briefly what success we've had in getting people back in the workforce using this program?
I think it's just like...
If we know.
I...
I can expand on you.
Okay.
So basically, the agreement it's been going into for the last four years is a match. The city puts $500,000 into it. We put 30 because of a portion to the city and the county. Basically, it's geared to get at individuals at a poverty level that are in need and in severe need of training and who are under and unemployed. So those statistics, we'd have to get from them to some degree. But as Melissa said, there's a report specifically, the specific statistics on placement I have to get from them.
Well, again, I think this is a worthy effort, and I'm glad that we're engaged in it. And maybe at our next committee hearing, when you come before us, we can get some more specific information. That's what I'm kind of interested in. If they're dealing with X number of clients and what's been the experience with getting those people back in, I see that, you know, they're trying to ensure that their candidates are possessing the skills necessary to be gainfully employed. That's great. How does that work? And that's all I'm trying to get at. Thanks very much. One other...
Your time.
Yep. We have an F, an approval of Amendment Three to NSA Interlocal Agreement. And this has to do with some administrative services. I guess I'm not clear, from reading the agreement, what exactly we're agreeing to under this memorandum of understanding or this amendment to the NSA Interlocal Agreement. Is there somebody here from the county attorneys, maybe they could address this?
I can try. So Teresa York, Douglas County Attorney's Office. This amendment actually isn't changing the underlying agreement very much, Commissioner. It attempts to do just a few things. One of those things is that the original agreement designated the county treasurer as the treasurer, but they have moved away from that and want to use a different treasurer. So this amendment changes, if you look at the bottom of page one, changes the designation of treasurer. And then going on to page two, they use a different acronym, I believe, for their organization, and we're changing that as well. And then going on to the last page, the rest of it remains in full force and effect. And so this is a very, if I may, minor change to that underlying agreement. And if you want more details of the underlying agreement, I'd be happy to talk with you about that after the meeting.
Okay. The thing that I was looking at is on page one, it says, "Agreement for the purpose of developing and administering a cooperative and coordinated program of services to the designated population as identified in Section 12 of the agreement." You know, I'm interested in what services are we talking about specifically?
And I'd be happy to provide you the underlying agreement, if you would like me to do that.
Thank you, because Section 12, the overall agreement, is not attached here. I don't expect it to be, but I'd appreciate to know.
Absolutely.
We do have a motion, second. Roll call.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Commissioner Craft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Abstain due to being on the board of Item M. Item M, workforce abstain.
Motion passes.
We'll go on, just so that, we're gonna do citizens' comments, and then we're gonna go to, for people waiting in the audience, we're gonna go to Item G, A, the salary discussion. And then we'll come back to Item A2 for the Eighteenth Amendment. We'll go to Item C, citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Commissioners-related items, not on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68132. I was interested, the gentleman that talked about the poverty tax thing earlier. I think he was confused when it came down here, because he thought he could probably discuss with the board his tax situation, and found out he couldn't. So I'm gonna bring up the rules. The rules are not on the agenda, so I guess I'm entitled to do that. I attempted to get on the agenda for that and was refused, not even replied to. But I'm gonna point out, most citizens are very common sense people, very logical people. So if we walk in here and we start on page one, it implies that we can debate. Why have you used that statement on the front page if we cannot, in fact, debate? Debate implies that we can debate. Or I can debate with the, as you referred to, the audience. I'm sorry, this is citizens. It's not an audience. So let's change some wording so that it's more in line with logical thinking of most consumers and most citizens. Comments is not debate. Debate is not comments. One second, please. Then when it gets to where it defines what citizens' comments can or cannot be. Again, some of that wording is not real logical. It's an opportunity for members of an audience to be heard for a maximum, but not on anything that's on the agenda. But then also, you have the comments before the agenda. Most citizens want to come down here and talk about what the current topics are. And then they sit down to read this, and it says, "Any topic not on the agenda." And then it says that the agenda itself should give reasonable notice of the matters to be considered. But it doesn't say the rest of that, that, first of all, on an agenda itself cannot do that. It cannot give notice. It is a non-human thing. It's a piece of paper. "On any item presented during." So by the time we get down here next week to comment on something presented during, it's all over, said and done. I don't think that's the intent of the Open Meetings Act. And then I guess finally, you know, the U.S. Constitution says that one branch of government cannot overstep the rules, the powers and responsibilities of another branch. So not referring to particular item on the next thing, but in general, I do not understand, and I think a lot of other citizens do not understand, why the city or the county can kick the road, the can or the bottle, so it be, of alcohol, a license to dispense or sell down the road to an agency that's not elected down, well, maybe they are, to the State Liquor Board. If you, if they have the responsibility, then why are we wasting taxpayer dollars here on it? Send the customer, the citizen down there to get his license. Don't talk about it here, because you say and city says you don't have a responsibility. Then why is it on the agenda? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, with that, just a statement of fact. Any item that's on the citizens' comments cannot be debated by the board, and that was talked about regarding the past, because it is not, that topic's not given proper notice on the agenda. Any agenda item that is listed on the board's agenda, citizens may have opportunity to discuss as the opportunity was given on the previous Board of Equalization item that no one took up. So it's one note that for the citizens for fact. With that...
I just commented, these rules are designed to prevent dialogue.
The gentleman was, the gentleman was not recognized. You're not recognized.
Time that he wants, but anybody else's comments are precluded. No dialogue with the citizens and the county board. That's the design of the rules.
So you're gonna just play this with not being recognized? Commissioner Morgan, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just want to mention that...
For a point of fact.
Right. On the fact that you stated was correct. And if there is an item on the agenda that a citizen wants to come up and discuss that is on our agenda, then we can, and I stand to be corrected by the chair, we can debate with that citizen that comes before us or answer questions concerning an item on the agenda at any time. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll just remind the board that you have to be recognized to speak, and I'd ask everybody to maintain themselves as adults. With that, we'll go to Item G, human resources. Item A is discussion. Item Three, sorry, is the resolution setting county, calendar year 2020, wage increases for various non-union county employees. Is there a motion by the board? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Duda. Anyone wants to discuss it? Please.
Good morning, commissioners.
Note the time on the, yeah.
Five minutes. It won't take that long.
Got it.
Being the first time I've had to darken your door for anything in 13 years, you're welcome.
Thank you.
But I'm here for a salary compression issue between my chief deputy and my single and only assistant chief deputy. Here's how that happened. A resolution that was done last September adjusted the steps, which gave a ninth step to these folks. That person, my assistant chief deputy, who runs our juvenile department, Board of Mental Health, and our jury commission, is gonna hit that step in January, which is a significant raise, which she deserves. Nobody has a problem with that. But when you give that step plus 3% to her and 3% to my chief deputy, Jane Alexander, who's in charge of the entire office, 4,500, or 45 employees, $3 million budget, will be making, with the assistant chief's longevity, about $2,500 less a year than what the chief, the assistant chief will be making, $2,500 more than my chief deputy, which isn't fair. And I think we can all agree that we're all about fairness and equity. So as a result of that, I would like to see this amended to give her a 9% raise. That's only 6% above the 3%, which is, I'm asking for $6,000 is basically what it is. Puts her right in the middle between myself and the assistant chief deputy, which I think is fair. Questions? Questions?
Commissioner Morgan?
For years, I've felt that elected officials, such as yourself, Mr. Klein, and all the other elected officials, have the ability to set the salary for chief deputies at whatever you think is proper. And I don't know if we've gotten off whack on this, but, you know, I view the, those positions as, I guess, patronage of a sort. I don't believe they're covered by any protection of civil service or any other kind, and that you ought to have the authority to do that. I believe that's, you know, you're accountable for that, we're not. So I'd like to see you be able to set the salary you believe it is without a whole lot of our involvement, frankly. I mean, if it was really out of whack, I suppose we'd ask you what the deal is, but that's my, that's my thought, and I'd like to see that, that philosophy prevail, because that's what it's been for years, to my knowledge.
Commissioner Morgan?
I'm supportive of your request. You've done a great job. Commissioner Boyle and I have been doing the budget for some years together with the rest of the Commissioners, sharing in that responsibility, and you have done a nice, efficient job running your office. And I understand what you're saying, so at the appropriate time, I'd be glad to make the motion to approve it. You know, it's difficult to say nine percent, but under these circumstances, I'm willing to go there.
Well, I only assume that this is gonna be a one-time thing. Once she's at the top step and everybody's pretty much along the lines of where they should be, I don't anticipate there'll ever be an issue again.
Commissioner Duda?
Quick question, if I may.
Done.
We've, in the past, used as a guideline that the chief deputies ought to be about ninety percent of the salary of the elected official. What would this do to that ratio?
That would make it be a hundred and twenty-one. It would be, I'd have to do the math, but I think it'd be around eight or nine or ten percent.
Less than, than your salary?
Yes, less than mine.
Thank you.
Five thousand less than me, five thousand more than the assistant chief deputy.
Very good, thank you. On this one? Commissioner Morgan?
I guess what I'd like to see is that you have the, you take the discretion to do what you think you need to do. I mean, I, whatever it comes out to be, I just see that it's your decision, you're running the place. And I do have to add, what Commissioner Morgan said, you're doing a terrific job, as is Mr. Klein, a really great job serving the taxpayers very well, and you're doing it as economically as possible, and you're running a hell of a good office, both of you are, I'll be. I think you need that discretion to do what you think you need to do to pay Ms. Alexander an appropriate salary.
I appreciate your support.
Thank you. A minus, wanna speak on that?
Thanks.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Don Klein, Douglas County Attorney. Very briefly, my chief deputy, I would ask for a five-point-three percent increase, and that would make her at ninety percent then. She's always, Brenda Beatle's always been at ninety percent, but last year, she got a three percent increase. My increase was four percent, so that made it so that it was a little skewed from that ninety percent rule. So I'm just trying to get her back to the ninety percent. I think that's where it should be. I could go on about her role, what she does. She's got, I think, five murder cases, except for next year. She's on call twenty-four hours, she's a liaison with the law enforcement, she does a tremendous job, she's here at six-thirty every morning. So that's all I'm asking, is that we get to that ninety percent, so that would be a five percent, five-point-three percent increase, I believe, for her. We'll stay at the ninety percent, although I think she deserves more, quite honestly. Just as a comparable again, and I know this, we can always talk about comparables, Sarpy County's chief deputy county attorney gets ninety-eight percent of what the county attorney makes, and Lancaster County Attorney's Chief Deputy gets ninety-five percent of what the county attorney makes. So I guess we'll live with the ninety percent, but I think it should be at least that, and so that would give her a five-point-three percent increase this year. Any questions? Like I said, I could talk more about that, but I think it's pretty simple.
Commissioner Morgan and Commissioner Boyle?
I've said it before, you know, we could not find a county attorney that could do a better job than you do under the difficult circumstances, and we thank you for that, and I'm supportive of your request, totally, and I know what your chief deputy, that kind of work that she does, and very supportive of that, and we'll be glad to make a motion when it's appropriate. And again, I thank you for your service, and the way you conduct yourself always when I unfortunately have to see you on TV, which I'm sure you feel the same way.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
I'd just like to add my two cents, you know, Mr. Klein, you've done a terrific job running that office, and my feeling is that, you know, you're really not before us with any problems at all. I mean, we do, we enjoy the professionalism that you bring to this, that office, it's amazing. And, you know, I voted for you being appointed years ago, and that didn't happen, and you went to the state and did a terrific job for them. So I'd like to do everything we can to see that you have the discretion to keep your team intact, and she is a remarkable chief deputy, to say the least. You've really put together a team that performs really well for the taxpayers of Douglas County. So I am completely in support of your request, and I think it's very reasonable, and I wanna make sure we keep tracking with the other counties on pay for you and for her, and give you the discretion you need for the people you wanna hire and bring in the kind of talent that you need. So you've always got my support, you've earned it.
I'm very fortunate to have very good people, a very good team, as you know, with Teresa and all the other staff that I have, the people in my office, we're very fortunate.
Thank you.
There's no further comment. There is a motion second. Is there a mo, an amendment? Somebody wanted to make an amendment? You, there's a motion second right now, and what's there, you would have to make an amendment to the numbers that's there, you would have to adjust up the deputy county attorney by five thousand, and you would have to, no, well...
That was nine, nine percent, excuse me, Danish County Clerk, nine percent for the clerk of the district court chief deputy, five-point-three percent for the county attorney chief deputy.
Just to make it to ninety percent.
Make that motion, make that motion.
There's a motion by Commissioner Morgan, and a second by Commissioner Boyle, to amend the amendment on the floor. We need to vote on the amendment first. Roll call.
I apologize, Mr. Chair. Motion was by Morgan, second by Boyle, is that what you said? Okay. All right. Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Amendment passes six-zero.
We've got a reasonable amendment on the floor, roll call on the new motion.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
We'll go back up to public hearings. Item A is Class, no, excuse me, we're gonna go to Finance, and number two first. That is a resolution approving the Eighteenth Supplemental Agreement to reflect the details of the financing by the Public Building Commission to redeem and refund the 2008 bonds, 2010 bonds, 2014 bonds, the twenty, which will be known as the 2020 Refunding Project, such financing being represented by no more than twenty-two million in principal amount of the Building Commission refunded bonds, and to establish the responsibility of city and county for the payment of the principal and interest on the twenty bonds. Mr. Cohen?
Good morning, Commissioners. Paul Cohen, Administrator Omar, Douglas County Building Commission. This resolution does pretty much what the Chair described. It refinances the three, the three bonds, 2008, 2010, and 2014, to enable us to take advantage of the lower interest rates currently in effect, would produce over the next ten years about nine-hundred thousand dollars in savings, which we would put in the capital improvement fund to continue to work on the unfunded requirements we have to maintain the structures that we have. Tyler Mullin, Bond Counsel, is here to answer any detailed questions you might have. I'm here to answer any top-of-the-weeds question you might have in less detail.
Is there a motion?
I'd move for approval.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Just parenthetically, any idea when our voting machine's gonna work?
If I can interject, because it's, it's not really the Building Commission's fault.
I understand, I understand.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Grant, I appreciate that. Saves me about an hour of explanation, I appreciate that.
This has been an ongoing thing for years now. The twenty-two, is it twenty-two million dollars in principal and interest on these three bonds?
Twenty-two million in principal.
Okay. Are being refinanced to capture a lower interest rate currently available on bonds?
That's correct.
And that will result in a savings of about nine-hundred thousand dollars to the taxpayers?
Over ten years, it's a decreasing amount over that period of time.
I'm really glad to hear that, because I've been pointing out, as you know, all year, that the delay of the proposed kids jail project across the street will result in bond savings because of the lower interest rate, and this is proof of that. So I commend you for capitalizing on that, but for the litigation that delayed the implementation of this program, we wouldn't have this million-dollar savings, and hopefully going forward, we'll realize even more. It's also important to note that because of that litigation, we're closer to the 2020 election, and this thing could be put on the ballot, to go to the people.
I'm gonna call the Commissioner out of order, that's the...
I wanna talk about the document that comes in the backup information here, relative to language on page five. I'm looking at these three issues, and I'm wondering, are these all of the outstanding bonded indebtedness of the Building Commission?
No, it is not.
Okay. Is there some reason that we're not refinancing all of the outstanding bonded indebtedness?
Yes, the others are not callable.
Say again?
The others are not callable.
Oh, you can't refinance?
You cannot refinance those until they get to a certain age of maturity, and then you can.
I see. But we're refinancing everything that we can?
As well, as long as the market allows us to do that, we will do it.
Okay. What is the other number? We have, we have twenty thousand, or twenty-two million here, what's the, we can't refinance yet?
There's approximately sixteen million that we cannot finance, refinance at this time.
Sixteen, one-six?
One-six.
Okay. So the overall bonded indebtedness of the Building Commission then would be thirty-eight million?
Thirty-eight-eight, thirty-eight million eight-hundred thousand, round numbers.
Okay. And the documents, the backup documents that you do provide us, do contain language relative to, I think it's a, this is the Eighteenth Supplement, right?
The Eighteenth is before you, yes, sir.
Yeah. And so the one prior to that, I believe it was the Seventeenth or the Sixteenth Supplement?
Seventeenth.
That has not gone into effect?
That has not, and so noted in the documents.
Okay. So we're realizing about a million dollars in savings because there's a lower bond interest rate, basically?
Potentially, that's correct.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
There is motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
We'll go back up to Item Four, Public Hearings. Item A is a Class C, Class C, one-two-three-two-to-one liquor license for beer, wine, and still spirits, for JFBC Group LLC doing business as Deer Creek Sports Cantina and Tacos, one-two-two-to-one Mary Plaza Suite 102, Omaha, Nebraska, Douglas County, 68168. Manager application for Robert A. Cantron II at 11713 Newport Ave, Omaha, Nebraska, 68164. We will, well, action for this can be, taking the day, the public hearing is still open. Let me know for the record, we had two letters of support for this. Any public comment on this? Close the public hearing, what's the will of the Board? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Kraft, roll call.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
Item B is public hearing on possible sale of surplus property at 225 North 115th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68154, formerly the Douglas County Election Commission Office. We will open the public hearing on this. Any public comment? We'll close the public hearing, what's the will of the Board?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Kraft?
Are we going to put a minimum that we will not accept below in the bid proposal? Or the sell proposal?
Good morning, Commissioners. Jerry Leahy, Public Property. Question again, Commissioner Kraft? I thought...
Are we going to put a minimum that we will not accept below? Are we gonna have to take the very lowest bid?
In following the statute, in the resolution today to approve, I set a value of that billing at seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Bids will be received by December twentieth to public property, to be reviewed by public property and the county attorney's office. It would be obvious that we would take the highest bid.
Yes, I know.
It could be...
And I, yeah. I don't know why he said it the way I did. You're right, it's obvious that we would take the highest bid, but my thought is, if the highest bid is somebody who bids an insignificant ten thousand dollars or something, will we have to take it?
No.
We can reject bids?
Yes.
Okay, good. I just wanna make certain that we can do that. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, Mr. Leahy, I believe the way this would work, first of all, I don't even, I shouldn't bring this up, but there's one word that jumps out of this whole thing, and it's a public hearing on possible sale. I mean, I just, I don't know why it has to say sale. Can you, is there a big deal with that?
Well, I think it's county attorney language, but Teresa may be able to answer that, but what I think is that it's possible, because until you vote today, it wouldn't be...
Ah, got it, okay. All right, I stand. Now, that answers my question, thank you very much, I should've seen that. Anyway, I, I believe this would eventually come back to us, obviously, for if you got an offer of seven-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand dollars, it'd come back to us, and we would approve that, isn't that correct?
I don't believe so. I think, I think this, between public property and the county attorney...
Okay.
If we had a ridiculous bid, we would come back to you all and say...
Well, you'll come back with any bid, right? I mean, we would handle that?
I don't believe so.
Okay, well, tell me how this is working then? I mean, are you making the decision then?
No, no.
Who is, who's making the decision?
No. Well, we're following the statute, and I'm just following what the county attorney has advised us to do with various publications, and...
I'm just asking who makes the decision?
Teresa?
Teresa, here at county attorney's office. I would direct your attention to the last paragraph of the resolution, and it says, "If there's no bids, or if the bids are substantially lower than the fair market value, the county attorney's office and the, and public properties director..."
I'm sorry, which one are you reading? You're going a little fast.
I'm sorry, I will go slower. It's the last paragraph of the resolution.
Okay, the last paragraph is...
Yep.
Be it further resolved?
Yes. And it talks, "If there's no bids, or if the bids are substantially lower than the fair market value, the county attorney and the director of public properties are directed and authorized to negotiate a contract for sale of the real estate at a price that is in the best interest of the county." So if you received bids that were very low, you're authorizing Jerry and our office to go ahead and negotiate a price that's in the best interest of the county, so it might not be what was bid. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but I just wonder, what if it, what if it comes in at seven-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand dollars? Is that the same thing that happens? It's not substantially lower than the fair market value. So what do you do if it comes in with a good bid? What do you do then?
Well, I think if we had a good bid, something that was fair market value, I think that would be covered by the rest of the resolution, and I think in the past, what Jerry has done, actually, last time, I think it didn't come in with a fair bid, so I apologize, I just went through an example that isn't applicable. But I think what would happen is Jerry would work with our office to negotiate the contract on that as well. So I, I think, I think both avenues are covered by the resolution, by the direction given by this Board, and the, and the resolution is based upon the statute, there's a specific statute that governs this process.
Okay.
And Jerry's worked with us before, and it went very well the last time.
Okay, that's fine, that answers my questions, thank you.
Thank you.
There is motion second. Roll call.
Commissioner Boyle?[1739.83] Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
We'll go on to committee discussion and action. Item A is finance. Item one is the budget report. Commissioner Morgan?
Mr. Lawrence, do you have anything you want to add?
Okay, we'll go on to the Human Resources Committee. Item one is the weekly personnel report of civil service that is as submitted. Item two, A, is discussion of the Douglas County 2020 legislative priorities, new legislative initiatives to be filed for the hundred and sixth second session. Marcos, you want to give intro to this, based on the meeting last week, or two weeks ago?
Sure. Marcus C. Martin, Douglas County Labor and Legislation. So what, the document that's in front of y'all is, it should say eleven-nineteen, discussion only. These were, these are essentially from the Human Resources Committee that we had, we've had two of them where we've discussed legislative items. This is, these are the items that kind of, that they made it out of that committee, that these would be new, specifically just new items, because we're in a carryover session this year in the hundred and sixth second session, which is a short, short session. These would be potentially new items that we would ask a senator to carry, and, and so these would be in addition to the, I don't know, nineteen items in the first session that we have taken a position on, some of them passed, some of them didn't, some are committees, some are in general, whatever. We're still gonna push all the, all the positions and priorities and, that we've, we've had on those previous nineteen items. We'll push that through the session. These five on here would potentially be new items that we would ask a senator to file.
Okay.
Is that the background?
Yes, that's fine. Commissioner Boyle?
A couple of things I'd like to bring up. I think at the tri-county meeting, it was interesting, a kind of a dawning of what really is already in place, and that is on the home rule legislation allowing counties the authority to take local control, which I totally agree with, not only ordinance authority, juvenile justice, and public health. Frankly, that covered maybe some more than that, but one of the things, the thing that was brought up was that the power to do that is already existent. If we make a contract with a body that has the authority to do that, that we gain all their powers, from what I understand, and I remember that, but I, we haven't really used it too much. We have some good working relationships with other governments where we share those authorities. But I'd like to see us review the authority to, I guess the way I'd put it is work with other governmental bodies to accomplish goals that they, they have the authority over, and I think we can get some, some things done, possibly without any more legislation. It may already exist, so I'd like to, Marcos, to work with some other legal staff to see if the possibility of merging some authority with other governmental bodies would then give us the authority. I understand that it does. It's legislation this past few years ago. The next item is that I want to talk about is item three. This, there are several states that do issue license plates directly from the state of, state Capitol or whatever, and in our case, it really seemed it would make some sense, but we, we can't spring this on the county treasurers or on NACO, and so I think, I'm the one who brought this up, so it's probably my job to do some talking and see what John Ewing thinks and some others, because out around the state, frankly, it could lead to a reduction in the number of employees, because if you go to the treasurer's office now, they have a whole room stacked with license plates. And what would happen under this change would be that when the plates are produced, that the person, a lot of things are being, a lot of the contact is being redirected toward the state anyway, that when you license, get, renew your license plates, that it goes to Lincoln, and they get the plate out of the penitentiary or wherever it's stored, and they mail it directly to the taxpayer, and it doesn't come to Douglas County, then you have to go out to pick it up, or else they mail it, and all this. It's a soul, it's getting rid of the second, second group of people. Now, that could lead, of course, to a reduction in employees, which I'm not trying to do, but it'd be, it seems a whole lot of efficient, more efficient if we did it that way. But again, I'm not the county treasurer, and I'm not trying to step into his shoes or his bailiwick. The other one, let's see, oh, is number five, and that is an initiative to revise that, the statute that puts us in the pickle when Mr. Googleley comes down and tells us that asking for relief and so forth, and I personally don't agree with it, and so I make the motions, and most of the time they pass. But it has, in my book, it's caused some conflict with the, with the office, because we have no choice, but they bring it down to us. And so I'd like to see us get that clarified, say that either the assessor makes the decision on these issues that are, whatever it is in chapter seventy-seven, or that the county board has real authority to act and reverse the recommendation of the assessor. That's what I think we need to do. And frankly, my feeling is that if you take a look at how taxpayers and small businesses are treated, are treated by the state, unfortunately, there is a lot more overregulation of those, those folks. For example, we have a, let's say we have an elderly woman whose husband has died, and now she's, I have a couple of people that I help, that I help them get through these things, and husband died, and now she wants to, what about my homestead? She's worried, and then her valuation goes up, what happens? And as it turned out, she was still under the, under the limit, so she qualified for a whole homestead exemption. But, and that really, the assessor's office does a great job in getting that information to taxpayers, and I, I use them to get that information. What I'm really after is, if we don't have the authority to act on the assessor's recommendations in a way that doesn't support what their recommendation is, then we need to get it off our agenda, because what it's really doing is smoke and mirrors on the taxpayers. They come down and they think that they can get relief from us, and they can't. And I'm not saying, I'm willing to vote no, or whatever it is, and I have to, I've done that in the past, I have no problem with it, but I'd just like to see it stopped at the assessor's office, or else give us the authority to get it done. So I think that's important to me as a legislative matter. Sorry to go on so long.
Okay. Commissioner Kraft?
You know, that tri-county meeting was one of the best I've been to.
Mm-hmm.
And there was great discussion, and great, it was just very good. You're talking on municipal counties, I think is what they called it.
Right.
And that's a great idea, and we do need to research it. The license plate item, we should also have in that the permanent plate for police vehicles and for county vehicles, and yes, it would cause a reduction in employees, but employees are hard to find right now.
Yeah.
This is such a tight labor market that it takes a little stress off our HR department. The county, the state, I believe, would just do like they do in a drop ship. You order it, it's packaged and shipped by the correctional facility. Doesn't touch other hands outside except till it gets to the post office.
Yeah.
So it'd be good savings to the state also, because they don't have to ship it to the counties. And that's pretty much all I wanted to say. Well, I like your BOE, Board of Equalization ideas.
You can abolish it.
Yes.
Do you want a motion to approve these as the, or are you just giving us your information?
I guess what I anticipated today was that the board would discuss the priorities they would wanna, the new priorities they would want to see move forward, and then I'll bring it back in a resolution.
Okay.
Next week. Those, I mean, whether you want all five of these, if you want the four of the five, if you want to add more, you know.
Okay, we'll bring it, bring it back next week.
Thank you.
With that, we do have need for executive session. I have one item litigation.
So move.
Bring it back next week in resolution.
Yes. Teresa?
Is security valid reason? I mean, how would I describe that for exec session?
I'm not sure what the issue is, so I'm.
Building security. We want to discuss it in executive session.
Teresa here at County Attorney's Office. The, this list provided in the statute is a non-exhaustive list, so it's intended to be instructive. I think there, I think there is a, I think, I think you could discuss building security. If it was something related to the security of public property or persons, I question whether we would have that discussion in open session, although it's an unusual topic. So I just make you aware of that. It is a non-exhaustive list in the statute.
Mr. Chair, if possible, I would like to include building security as one of the reasons for going into executive session.
I'm assuming this has to do with the addition of some new employees?
That's part, it would be part of it.
We'll do it on personnel. If you're fine with that.
I'm.
Security and personnel.
Just do both. We'll cover it that way.
Okay, we reserve the right to enter into executive session in order to protect the public interest with respect to discussion regarding litigation, security, and personnel. Is there a motion second from the board? Motion by Mr. Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan. Roll call.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
And again, we're going in for litigation, personnel, and security.[1163.65]
What's up?
Boogie Man of the Month.
Okay. And Commissioner Borgeson's absent. Commissioner Boiles, yes. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Duda. Commissioner Kraft. Commissioner Morgan is yes. And Mr. Chair. Motion passes six to zero.